Let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on Friday, April 29th at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do not see anybody. No.
Is there anybody in the waiting room?
Sorry, waiting room. I know, I can't stop seeing that. I don't see anybody in the waiting room. Okay, um, meeting dedication other person. Bruce, thank you.
Okay, I just have one to dedicate and this is in, on behalf of Mahandas Gandhi and that is the following. To safeguard democracy, the people must have a keen sense of independence, self-respect and their oneness.
Thank you very much. Short and sweet. Alright, so there's several mayoral proclamations. And I'm just gonna go through them, but I'm not going to read them individually. But there will be an opportunity for you to view me reading them at a date in the future. So, mayor proclamations. Drinking Water Week, I'm assuming it's Safe Drinking Water Week, Clean Air Month, National Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just wanna say a shout out to all of my nieces, nephews, son and daughter-in-law who are teachers, Historic Preservation Month and Mental Health Awareness Month. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, although we are going to be pulling an item down from that and that item is...
That would be item B and then once we, and the rea- I guess I can explain, the reason being is that there, since we originally created this agenda item, we have had further conversations with the developer and there is a contingency that we are approving the CSM on, it's contingent upon. So, we figured it'd be appropriate to pull that down so that contingency can be officially read into the motion as opposed to just approving it via consent without that being officially recognized. I don't know if it's necessary, but we thought, let's do, do it anyways.
Alright, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified?
I'll make that motion.
Say it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries and then, go ahead.
So I can address what now is, I guess, item 12, 12. The discussion and possible action regarding a two lot certified survey map along Putman Parkway and County Trunk Highway M. This is the certified survey map that is in conjunction with the TIF development agreement that was approved back in April for the signature warehousing development. This CSM creates a 27 acre lot, plus or minus, out of a 56 acre plus or minus landholding that the City of Milton owns. This was in conjunction with the TIF development agreement. This will be then sold to the developer to be developed with their 109,000 square foot facility. The reason it's being pulled down, as I mentioned previously, is that we want to have, we have since added a contingency to the approval of that certified survey map that the existing permanent rail spur easement that exists along the north property line, with the lot line as it is right now, there is a small gap with that permanent rail spur easement. And we've requested that the developer include that, 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 or fill that small gap on the final certified survey map before it is recorded. The reason being is we need to have a contiguous rail spur easement that starts at its origin over by United Ethanol and runs contiguous all the way down to its terminus at the Clausen Chocolate Site. Although it's only a 50 foot gap, it's important that we have that, obviously, because we don't want the rail to just stop there. The reason that the easement doesn't already exist is by state law, we can't grant ourselves an easement. So Mr. Bellardi had, who sold us the property, had already given us an easement on his property, but they're purchasing a, a small piece that was not previously a part of Bellardi's landholding and therefore we need to just kind of fill in that gap. So, staff's recommendation would be to approve the certified survey map as presented contingent upon the inclusion of the permanent rail spur easement as well as any other grading or necessary easements for the effectuation of that construction of that rail line, which is commencing pretty much right now. So, approve the CSM contingent upon the inclusion of the easements as directed to the developer.
Any questions or comments or a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. I'll, I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Alright, we have a presentation by Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company. And I think they're here, so you can get started.
So as Palin kind of gets himself situated up there, for a reminder for the folks who have been on the council for a while, as well as our new council member, Mr. Eric Stockman, CivMCC, as we commonly refer to them as, or Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, is the City of Milton's insurance provider. And that is both in a loss prevention as well as a property insurance provider. But as you will see from Mr. Palin Allen's presentation, they are more than just an insurance provider. They are also kind of our, our trainer, they're our go-to labor attorney too in some ways. They are an extension of our Human Resources Department. They provide safety training to our Public Works staff, they provide safety training to our police staff, they provide professional development for administrative employees, aspiring leaders, current leaders. They are really more than just an insurance company and that's how they have positioned themselves over the last, I'm sure Palin will say 40 years or so, or, and the, the member, the number of member communities continues to grow pretty much, you know, annually, I think you're over 40 or so now, and again, I don't wanna take all your talking points, but just wanted to give, yeah, I'll send you a bill. Just wanted to give folks kind of an overview of who CivMCC is, why they're here, and all of the things that they do, not only for staff, but for our community. They are an excellent service to all of us, so. Yeah, it'd be best if you're on the mic so it can be, because we're recording this for posterity and that picks it up.
Alright, so this will be a good barrier between myself and you anyways, in case things get out of control here, so. Thanks again for that kind introduction and it sounded kind of one-sided, I think, in that, like CivMCC is awesome and we like to think we're pretty good at what we do, but truly this works because it's a partnership. And Milton is one of 53 cities and villages across the state of Wisconsin that are CivMCC members. And so what I have handed out to all of you, this is what's called our stewardship report, and I'm gonna take maybe 10, 15 minutes to go through it. I appreciate you giving me that time. I think it's important though, as, you know, we continue to see a lot of transition within our membership, whether it be councils or staff, or, you know, even on our end, that we kind of keep this story alive and in front of you, just to make sure everyone understands why this is important and why you should care. Milton has been a member since 2009 and you kind of referenced how long we've been in, in business. We've existed for 34 years. Now, we started in 1987 with 25 members, so we've had that slow growth model. I think one of the things that's probably most interesting, if you're familiar with insurance companies at all, they have what's called retention and it's something that they really shoot for and strive for. Well, we've only lost three members in 34 years. So that's a pretty amazing track record, but again, that's not just us. It's our members that buy into what it is we're doing and plugging in, taking advantage of everything that there is to offer from CivMCC. Milton is sincerely one of the prime examples of what we look for in a CivMCC member. Tremendously engaged, utilizing the resources, just a fantastic relationship. So, I mentioned that this is a stewardship report, that's an important term. Because we're a mutual, you, every one of you sitting here is really an owner of our organization. You're part of the ownership group. Obviously, we answer to a board, but every one of our members has representation. They direct a lot of what we do and one of the nice things is the fact that we're a mutual. At the end of it all, at the end of a year, if we have extra resources, we're not answering to shareholders or, you know, we don't have agents that we need to pay commissions on the front end or those that want to see a good profit and loss statement. We have you as members that we answer to. And so we take in the premiums at the beginning of the year, but when the end comes, if we have, we ended up with more than we needed, we're able to give it back and we have a long track record of doing that. So, that's again made possible because our approach to this, this model, this insurance model, our approach is very proactive. It's training, it's services, it's providing you with HR tools, resources, not just on the safety side, but on the HR and employment practices side. When you talk about management and supervision and other significant challenges that I think we're continually facing out there is we have employees come up through the system and, you know, they were great employees and we're wondering why they're struggling as a supervisor or manager bec- well, because it's a totally different skillset. And so we want to equip those individuals to be successful because we believe that on the front end, if we take care of the training side, we have a good relationship with our employees and equip them to succeed, it will drive down losses. And so that proactive nature has allowed us to be very successful in using those premium dollars effectively and again, in turn, being able to give much as, much of that back to you. So, here you have the stewardship report. I won't read every page to you. This is on our website as well. If you, you know, lose this tomorrow and you're like, wow, that was really fantastic. I wish I could go back and see that presentation again. You can hop on our website, it's there and available to you. And this is last year's version. And so you'll notice that a few things I mentioned, like 53 members, it'll look differently in here, but right now we, we added a couple, so we do sit at 53. The mission and vision statement, obviously important to any organization, but for us and today, what I want to focus on really is just that guiding principle. Our board members were adamant about adding this portion of the guiding principle in here and it's where it says that we're guided by the principle of teamwork and our success is a direct result of municipalities that are collectively engaged and invested in their membership. They were adamant that that go into this particular document because that says it all. In fact, I was just out today in an exploratory meeting considering a new member for CivMCC and that is what we are looking for. We're not just like open our doors, come in, hey, if you want insurance, we got it. Not at all. We want people that are willing to engage and invest in CivMCC on your end, because we feel, we feel that on our end, we owe that back to our membership as an entirety. So, when we bring in additions, we want to make sure that they're a very good fit for what we're about and what we're trying to do. And the track record has been good there. So what do we provide? How is this structured? Well, I mean, I know everyone gets excited about insurance talk, so I guess hang in here. But I do think it's important that you understand, again, you, you own this company. So if I'm you, I do want to understand, well, how is this structured and what does it look like? Everything above that line is written on CivMCC paper. So we provide directly to you, public entity, which is our liability insurance, workers' comp and auto physical damage. In the business, it's called, it's written on our paper. So we bring in those premiums, but we also pay out those losses. I won't get into the weeds, but we have reinsurance and different ways of protecting our membership should we have that catastrophic event. We're in this with places like Kenosha and Wauwatosa and Racine in Green Bay and we know some of the things that have occurred there, you know, in recent history. But we also have the Dells and Lodi and, you know, Milton yourself. So we have a wide variety of members and we spread out that risk across the membership. And if you look back across our entire 34 year history, pretty much every member in here has been the one that we like touted and we're very proud of. They've also that same member at some point probably been the one that, yeah, well, we wish they probably weren't a member this year, but it's not a year to year thing, it's a long haul. And we try to take that long view, knowing that you're gonna have your good years and your bad years. That's the idea of mutual insurance and pull, pull, pooling your resources together. I'll finish this page and I'll see if you have any questions. Below this line, these are what we call group purchases. So what we do is, when you put our membership together, we have pretty good buying power. Our populations combined are about 25% of the entire state of Wisconsin. We're located in all four corners, Superior, Green Bay, I mentioned, Kenosha on Alaska and then a whole lot in between. And we have various sizes, I've also mentioned that. But when you put it together, it's 25% of the state. And so when we go out to the marketplace and we say we're interested in something, people will listen. That allows us to often purchase products that you might not be able to get individually or get pricing or access that would probably be challenging for you to find on your own. So again, those pooled resources really help us, not just in the insurance side, but in a lot of the products that we give to you as well. So this group purchase, below the line there, those are, a lot of those are voluntary, that you don't have to have them. But there's something that we can offer to our membership at a competitive price. The last one on there that's a little bit unique is MPIC in the far right corner. And not only do you own us, but we own a third of MPIC. If you remember the state fund, probably five or six years ago now, the state property fund pretty much went belly up overnight. You could see it coming, but it happened quickly. And what we ended up doing was trying to find a solution for our members and the other municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. Within 10 months, we went from concept to creation of an insurance company that included us, Wimick and the league. So two of our competitors and us combined to create a market solution. Because ultimately, if there was not a market solution for you, you and the citizens of the state would be the ones that lose. So, we came together with who had been competitors, put that in place and that is who you have your property insurance through. So that also has been quite a success story. Interesting deal, if you can imagine a insurance company, concept to completion in 10 months, that's fairly unheard of. But thankfully, the OCI recognized that was a need. Any questions on the insurance side of things? Alright, riveting stuff. Let's jump ahead a page here and you can take a look at your membership at a glance. I mentioned there, UC 51, well, we now sit at 53, we added two members. Our newest members are the Village of Germantown and the Village of Greenville, which actually was a town a year ago, became a village and jumped right in and had the opportunity, once they became a village, to become a member of CivMCC. So, but population of 12,000, Germantown's around 25,000, really nice fits for our membership and we're happy to have them aboard. Laying out all the different premiums, we'll break them down. Again, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here. You see, we bring in about 15 million a year. Hopefully, that's gonna continue to grow as we're a little bit more active in the marketplace. But we're bringing in right around 15 million and we typically return about four and a half of that in dividends. Number of other programs that I'll touch on here briefly as well. Member exposure information, if that interests you, it's just kind of to give you that overview of what it looks like when you put this all together. Claims management, the next page there. Again, if I'm sitting in your shoes, I'm wondering, well, how effective is this insurance company? One of the best ways to determine that is your, your loss ratios. Loss ratios, I, I hopefully not insulting anyone's intelligence, but a loss ratio is for every dollar I bring in in premium, how much am I paying out in losses? Lower is better. It means that you're, you're doing well. Well, again, because of the proactive nature, we have some pretty amazing loss ratios that are put in front of you. In fact, I, I've been with CivMCC now for almost 20 years, but I was in the private sector for 10 years. And I remember when I first came over and they're, they're showing these loss ratios, I thought they were kind of playing a trick on the new guy. Like I was supposed to believe that these are really your loss ratios. Turns out, it is true and it is accurate, but again, it's because the members are so active, we're able to keep those losses down. And in the industry, you're pretty happy to get around 80, 85%, but you're sitting there below 50 in all three of these main categories. So again, I won't go too deep into numbers unless somebody wants a better explanation there. The intent today is just to kind of give you that overview and, you know, hopefully help you understand a little bit more about who we are. So Al kind of referenced some of the services that we provide. This is where I think Milton shines, taking advantage of these services. Very heavy users of safety, the employment practices, HR, the management trainings that I mentioned earlier. Heavy, heavy users, but also taking advantage of the different modes that we provide training, whether it be distance learning, whether it be webinars, live and recorded, just a variety, the training programs, we'll do them here on site, we'll do them in regional locations, but just a very active participant in all of those. And I guess it'd be one thing to sit here and say, yeah, we do all this training and we're glad you come. Everything that we offer to our membership is part of the membership. So there's no additional fee, no additional cost, it's built in. And that, you know, again, it's free, so that's fine if it's free, but it's really high quality. Very proud of our team and the staff that we have. Just, they care about our members, they care about what they do and it really shows in the work that they put in. I would stack them up against any trainer and I've seen trainers all across the country and I would put them right up against any of those trainers. Just a really fantastic group that we've been able to put together. So, it's free and it's good, so hopefully that's a, a win for both of us. You have dedicated service teams, so every one of our members gets a specific individual to address their concerns in the areas that I've mentioned. But one that's new that you should be aware of, the last, in the last year, we started taking a really hard look at our loss information, our loss data. And you can probably guess which department in our municipalities is driving the most losses. It's no surprise, the police department. And that's across liability, workers' comp and even auto physical damage. What we did is we had an internal, one of our teammates was a former deputy chief in West Alice, had a real passion, extremely well-known in those circles, and we turned that individual loose to provide service specifically to law enforcement. It's been a tremendous decision for us. It's badly needed out there, really appreciated. And within a short year, he has made significant inroads in our membership. So, just an idea, I think, of how we try to form what we do, because also we work with our municipalities and villages, we have a pretty good understanding and we try very hard to meet you where you're at and fulfill your needs. So, one of the ways that we do that is we create round tables and all kinds of venues, the trainings, etc. Where we bring those professionals together and we have sessions, we might tee up a topic or two, but we're really listening to the challenges that we're seeing out there in, you know, in our membership and seeing if there's something that CivMCC can do to address it. Some of the best initiatives we've ever come up with really came out of those environments. And again, it speaks to the participation of yourself and the other members. The trainings, all that, if you want a, a really detailed list, there's a 66-page training catalog out on our website that you can look through. That has all the different topics that we do. This is just a sampling here and some of the different ways that we try to reach our members. The other challenge is not just the distance that I mentioned around the state, but simply the 24/7 nature of your operations. So, we try to find multitudes of ways to reach each and every one of our members and again, provide that service where it's needed. You know, training numbers, I, you know, I don't know if that's gonna mean necessarily a whole lot for you sitting here right now glancing at it, but that 806 programs, again, I guess you can do a little math, we have 53 members and we did 806 programs. We're really active. Milton last year, knowing that you're one of our smaller members, which we don't treat any member different, small, medium or large, but being one of our smaller members, you had 14 visits of your own. So extremely active and really, I think, on their game as far as executing the work plan and working alongside us, bring us out and have us help you where the needs are. So anyhow, there's a little breakdown of all the different programs that we do. And then on the next page, you have what are called advantage programs. This is another one, if I'm gonna stay within that 10 to 15 minutes, I promise, I probably can't go into every one of these. But outside, in addition to all the services, we do a number of programs. We have a grant program, which probably sounds scary because grants are usually a lot of paperwork. Not this grant program, it's your money, but we want to return it back to you in a way that you win and the membership wins. So we do a 50/50 split. For a member the size of Milton, that would be $5,000. You spend 10, we give you 5, as long as it's something on risk management and reducing your exposure. So you get something out of it, whether it be equipment or additional materials, but the membership gains as well because we drive down that loss ratio that I was talking about earlier. In theory, we do the right thing over time and our losses come down and that's certainly what we have seen. Some of the other advantage programs, we spotlight our members, a lot of creative solutions. We'll do a three to four minute video on a really intriguing idea. We'll give them $2,000 if they win the member spotlight program and we'll do a video, share it out with the membership. That may not sound like much, but boy, I've seen some of the most excited public works and parking wreck people in my life because we went and did a three and four minute video and shared it out with the membership. So, just a neat way, I think, to kind of reward people for some of their creative solutioning. Dividends, I've talked about, the NeoGov and Biddle programs. Milton uses all of our HR products, the NeoGov and the, the Biddle products. They've used them all. That's fantastic. These are tools that help you do HR the right way. They help you onboard new employees. It has an entire learning management system behind it. So, I've mentioned that Milton has been a member since 2009. I, if you had an employee here that was with you at 2009, I could show you every training that they have ever gone to during their time with Milton. So that allows you to understand where your training has occurred, but also plan ahead and where maybe some of your training needs would be in the future. So that's something that we provide to the membership as well. We do a mental health assistance program. I just mentioned law enforcement. Well, unfortunately, those individuals are sometimes in situations that are, are difficult to manage. And, you know, we were recognizing before the whole Act 29 and, and what the state tried to do, we were recognizing there was a real need for our membership and helping these individuals get what, what they needed in order to move past some of these events. And so, we created a, a program where anybody that was involved in a traumatic incident could utilize up to six visits with a professional outside of the EAP. EAPs don't really work for that group, probably not the right skillset. We found those skillsets, brought them in and that's, unfortunately, that's a program that's being used quite a bit. But successfully, we've had nice feedback on that program. We support the Texas Services through accreditation, IT assessments. This is something Milton has done as well. The IT assessments, you don't have to look too hard to see what's going on in the cyber world and that market is quickly becoming challenging. What can we do? We can try to do as much prevention as possible. And so we partnered with an IT provider, they do a really nice review of your networks. They provide a report that probably any one of us could actually read and somewhat understand, but they provide another report for those that have to make the changes. Discounted rate, and again, we kick in 50% of the cost of that, just to help you along. And if you really want to save money, you can put the other 50% back through that grant program and you'll get it for a very discounted rate. Battery shut off programs, infrared testings, again, you can read there, I, I won't go into detail. The point on this is, we're just trying to find any way we can to help our membership out. And those needs never change. It's a very dynamic world out there. There seems to be always something new, right? When we think we got it all figured out, you know, tomorrow happens. And so, constantly trying to evolve. This, uh, next page here, the value. One of the things that can be challenging is how do you put that into value, the training and all the different services? Because, you know, it's not just coming to a training, it's being able to pick up that phone and say, hey, I have an FLSA question or an FMLA question. Or I'm thinking about, you know, doing this type of action with an employee. Is there something I need to consider? So what's the value in all that? A little challenging to pull together and we can certainly do that if you're interested to our best guess. But overall, I mentioned earlier that we usually bring in about 15 and return about four, four and a half. There you kind of have the breakdown of how that money goes back to our membership. So again, we're simply stewards. We appreciate you trusting us and we don't need it, we give it back. I talked already, I think, about the partnership in action and how we connect with our different groups, but you can see there, Public Works, Parking Rec, Fire EMS, IT, Law Enforcement, Loss Control, Human Resources, and we're trying a new one this year for a library. We have found that the library has their own unique set of challenges as well. And so we are starting a library roundtable and I would expect some programming to come out of those as well. Our Board of Directors, we are governed by seven board members. We take two from our small category, that would be population 15,000 and under, two from our medium, which is 15,000 to 50,000, and then two from the large category, which is anything over 50,000. One considered to be at-large, could come from any one of those groups. We have a nice diverse set of skills here. We have finance and HR and administrators, attorneys, make a really good board. They've been consistent and I think they've been very responsible in their duties. So we're thankful to have them. And there's a, on the last page, just kind of an overview of our total membership. So you can see that slow growth pattern, we're kind of shooting for about two a year. I think, I, I kind of am responsible for our growth strategy and I think if I added four members a year, I would have zero friends at CivMCC. It's just, it, it's a lot, all the effort and time and energy we put in. It's just, it, it's a lot, all the effort and time and energy we put in. It prevents us from growing rapidly, but I think that's a good thing, and I believe that's to your benefit and the other members' benefit, to be sure that. Growth is intelligent growth, it's smart growth and responsible, so that we protect what we have. And not, not lose that. So, is there any questions on anything I covered there? Alrighty, well, if you think of something, you can reach out to me, I know Al introduced me, probably not sure you heard him correctly, my name is Palan Allen, so. It rhymes and it's pretty ridiculous, I didn't name myself, this is what I was given, uh, you can find me on Civmic. You can go under our support matrix, or you can just hit, hit me at, uh, P E A at C V M I C dot com, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can. Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Are you expecting me to stay for the rest of your meeting? Alright, yeah, guys, somebody was nodding their head, yeah, so, thank you for letting me go free, have a good night.
Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding a final plat for Red Hawk Farms second edition.
So this is, uh, Red Hawk Farms' second edition, for folks who may not, uh, remember or recall. Red Hawk Farms is the single-family residential subdivision that exists on top of the hill, as it's commonly referred to. Uh, up here, uh, in, in Milton, this is the third phase of development. The Red Hawk Farm subdivision, uh, was started by Forester Development. Uh, and they did the first two phases of development, and then subsequently sold the remaining, the remaining landholder, uh, land holdings. Uh, to Chisholm Land Development, uh, in the amount of thirty-four point seven acres. This phase of development, al- albeit only, uh, four acres, is for twelve residential lots. Uh, this will be a continuation of that same style and pattern of development. We'll call for the extension of Hilltop Drive further to the south. Uh, all of these lots can be served by existing utilities, so no existing utilities will need to be extended to serve these lots. Uh, a developer's agreement is in negotiations right now between, uh, the city administration and the developer. Which will be forthcoming at a future, uh, meeting, hopefully our next meeting. But this is, uh, a pretty straightforward plat and one that we are now accustomed to in that area, and, uh. We have no, uh, comments, questions, or concerns about it. This was previously reviewed earlier, uh, this afternoon by the Plan Commission and unanimously approved and forwarded to the council for, with a favorable recommendation.
Alright, does anybody have any questions or comments or a motion?
I do have a question. As I'm looking at this development and the development that has taken place so far. I know that in our parks planning, we generally have had a range. Where a neighborhood park is going to be. Um, and I'm just wondering if anybody has looked to see if this is still in that range. For Water Tower Park? Or if this is an area, um, maybe behind it, before this next expansion? That maybe we should plan on putting a trail or a greenway or a prairie or, you know, just. To stay consistent with the guidelines that we have in our parks plans.
Yes, so this, this subdivision and, and, uh, and the subsequent subdivisions that will continue to the south. That are owned by Chisholm, uh, will be serviced through the existing Water Tower Park. Um, they're, they're really not that far apart. Uh, the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan calls for a multipurpose path to be constructed along the gas line. And although the gas line is not shown on this map, because it's just a little bit to the south, that will be the opportunity for the city. And hopefully the developer at that time, uh, to begin to effectuate that plan for that multipurpose path. That will then hopefully connect, uh, Crossroads Park all the way up to Schilberg Park, that's kind of what the plan has always been. So, this, yeah, this, uh, there won't be a, a, a park dedication. Uh, in this phase or any of the future subsequent phases of this landholding, until we get down to the, the gas, gas line.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
I'll second that.
It would be actually a motion to approve the final plat, uh, for Red Hawk Farm second edition. With the contingencies outlined in the staff memo, sorry.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries, good job. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand twenty-two street improvement bid award.
So this is for the improvements on Woodcrest and Blanch Drive. Um, bids were received on April twenty-first, we received two bids, um, Payne and Dolan was the low bidder. With an amount of two hundred and three thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. Uh, the bids provided the necessary paperwork to be, um, to be received. I guess the recommendation would be to award the bid to Payne and Dolan.
Any questions or comments?
Will we be? Excuse me, will we be sending notification to those people on that street? I know that there are some, um, special situations in that area there, so I'm just wondering. How soon those residents might be getting that notice that we're gonna start on all this?
We sent letters out last week and we know, at least some of them were received, cause we did receive a few calls with some questions.
I'll move that we award the street improvements to Payne and Dolan Incorporated.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman to perform engineering construction services. For the two thousand and twenty-two street improvement.
So Baxter and Woodman has provided a work order to provide the engineering construction services, this would be, um. Preparation of the construction contract, um. Pre-construction meeting and then other onsite construction services throughout the project. The amount was listed as not to exceed for thirteen thousand dollars, the actual amount will be billed based on the actual work performed. But again, not to exceed thirteen thousand. The recommendation is approve the work order from Baxter and Woodman for the twenty twenty-two street improvements.
Questions, comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, that we approve the work order from Baxter and Woodman for the twenty twenty-two street improvements.
I'll second.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed thirteen thousand.
Everybody okay? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding voluntary sampling of the Milton Water Utility for, Mark is gonna pronounce it. But he's been practicing, he's been practicing, either Mark can say him.
Perfluorocle and polyfluorocle.
Alright, there we go. Go ahead.
Uh, so the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources has created a voluntary sampling program. To, for community water systems in Wisconsin to determine, or to sample to see if there is PFAS. In the water sources. Um, if we were to elect to proceed with the sampling, we would work with the N R to obtain the samples and. Um, and the, and the sampling results, and then any follow-up actions that may be required. Um, depending on what's discovered, if there is PFAS discovered in our water. Um, additionally, we will, that's voluntary, we will also be required. Um, sometime between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five to sample for PFAS. Um, and that's a requirement of the EPA. Uh, that, the sampling, the voluntary sampling will not be allowed to be used to, uh, comply with the required sampling. By EPA, so we will be required to do it again. But this voluntary sampling would allow us to sample earlier if, if it was desired. This is also discussed at the Public Works Committee meeting, and Public Works Committee provided a favorable recommendation to proceed with the sampling.
Questions? Is there a motion? You could just use PFAS as spelled out.
I would move that, uh, we, uh, go ahead with the voluntary, um. Uh, let's see, voluntary testing? Uh, sampling, uh, for PFAS.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Alright. Alright, uh, another very, very important appointment. Discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of a city of Milton Weed Commissioner.
So our s- city ordinances require appointment of a weed commissioner, um, in May. Um, we are recommending Paul Smith for that position. But again, mayor appoints a position, common council approves based on the ordinance, so. Take your direction.
I concur with Paul Smith being our weed commissioner. I'm officially appointing him right now.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Paul Smith as the weed commissioner.
There's, uh, motion and a second, probably some sort of certificate. That Civmic will provide, um, regarding the appointment of a city of Milton Weed Commissioner, all those in favor, say aye? Anybody opposed? Alright, congratulations, Paul, please put that in his HR file. Discussion and pa- possible action regarding two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three committee appointments, Jenny, do you wanna go ahead?
I can, so there are two committee appointments that are in addition from our, from the last meeting, that would be Lisa Brown. Who is recommended for the library board and Dale Falk, who is recommended for the zoning board of appeals, the alternate number two.
And these are, uh, volunteers from the community who completed applications, and this is the recommendation from the mayor.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, committee appointments.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I just love the cooperation on the side here, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Alright, Teresa and Bill gotta step up their game, you can let them make the rest of the motions. They're short a player or two, so Team Teresa, you know, they're working with two. That's true, that's true, they are, they're carrying their weight.
I was trying to formulate the, uh, resolution to change it to weed czar.
We can change that at a future policy meeting. Uh, discussion and possible ac- action regarding chief election inspector pay rate, another one for Jenny.
Alright, so at the A- April election, um, we actually were, had a unique situation because we had. One elec- chief election inspector and then one who was training. Um, we did become aware that we don't have a lot of people that are interested or who have, um, completed the chief election inspector training. With the chief election inspector training, it is six hours per term, and compared to a poll worker or. Just your standard election inspector, which says it needs to be some type of training, which equals out to usually one to three hours. Essentially, the chief election inspector is the person that is responsible for the election for eith-. Either the day or as we did, we will be doing in the future for a half of the day. Um, and then the other person will take over for the second half of the day. They are responsible for anything from, um, reconciling voter numbers to signing all of the paperwork. Plus then if there's any complaints, concerns, or questions from the voters, they're the ones that make those final decisions of. Uh, what the procedures are. Uh, so after that, we did find out, um, after polling different municipalities that. We tar- we pay, pay nine dollars an hour for both the poll workers and chief election inspectors. Other municipalities have in the past, um, have a differentiating pay for that. Because of the different, uh, duties that are required, so we thought we'd bring this to it to have that differentiating. Um, to see if it's something that we can encourage peop- more people to be interested in it. So we're recommending from nine dollars an, an hour to eleven dollars an hour. Um, for the remaining elections of the year, it would be a hundred and eighty dollars for all of the elections. Um, one other portion of this is that a chief election inspector must reside within the city, so. Where an election inspector or poll worker must be in the, reside in the county, so for example, someone from. Who is a poll worker for the city of Milton, they can actually go and work in the town of Milton also. Um, so to keep people here and interested, that's what we're looking for some direction if that's an option.
The, the only thing I would add is we are very, very fortunate to have a very robust pool of poll workers. Um, as I'm sure folks are aware, throughout the nation, poll workers, uh, even before some of the recent, uh, events that have taken place. Uh, the national scene, poll workers were getting harder and harder to come by, we are very fortunate in Milton. To have a good group of poll workers that are incredibly dedicated, and we have a phenomenal chief inspector and a chief inspector in training. Um, so this is a proactive, this isn't something that was requested of us, but it is proactive. Uh, really to, again, as, as Jenny pointed out very well, um, the level of responsibility between a poll worker and a chief election inspector. Is considerably different, and, um, I know that frankly, the two that we have would probably do it for free. Uh, but they're not always gonna be around, we hope they're around for many, many, many years until Jenny and I retire. Uh, but we can't count on that, so we're trying to be proactive, and really, y- you know, it's, it's about, it's about fairness and equity and. And really, uh, you know, helping those folks, uh, feel appreciated, because it is a very difficult task, it is a thankless job. And it is getting more difficult every day, uh, as you read the news, so we're lucky here in Milton on many fronts.
Any other questions or comments or a motion?
I guess my only question is regarding eleven dollars an hour being an incentive. Uh, and, and whether, um, you know. I know it's going from nine to eleven, uh, which is a significant percentage increase. Um, i- is eleven the appropriate number?
I can add to this, so, um, out of the forty villages, towns, and cities that I polled. The average chief inspector hourly rate is seventeen dollars and eighty cents. Um, and then, and a, an election inspector, poll worker is fifteen dollars and forty-six cents. So after the discussion, once for the two thousand twenty-three budget, we may come back and increase that. But this amount was something that was consistent to some of our local municipalities, some of our surrounding communities. That would at least get us through the end of the year without having to have that, uh, a larger amount absorbed into the budget.
Thank you.
I'll move that we approve the pay for chief election inspector and alternate chief election inspector. To increase to eleven dollars per hour with the idea that it would be reviewed to increase at the end of twenty twenty-two.
And I'll second that.
Alright, Team Teresa's on top of this one, there's a motion and a second. Yes, improved upon yet, yeah, balls in your court, let's see what you can do with the next one. Uh, all those in favor, say aye? Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Alright, well, the next one could be controversial, we've set aside sixty minutes to talk about it. Um, because I didn't read the proclamations, so you guys could talk about this. Discussion and possible action regarding the selection of the official city newspaper.
I will take this one, so annually, the city must, uh, approve or select the official newspaper for the city of Milton. This year, I actually provided two different options, um, and they are the James Bogazette and the Milton Courier. Um, Milton Courier is published weekly and the James Bogazette is published daily. So the reason why is because. So the reason why is because um wanted to see what the differences were, and so for comparison's sake, um, if I used a conditional use public hearing, which is a class two notice, um, they are required to be post- published in the paper twice. So if we were to receive a notification and we have all the information, we send it on April twenty-eighth to the Milton Courier. The publication dates May sixth and May thirteenth, the earliest available date of the meeting would be May twenty-third. On the other side, if we were to use a daily newspaper, we still have to follow that uh cons- two consecutive publications, which are considered a week in between, but the earliest available date of the meeting would be May sixteenth, so we're gaining that extra week. Um, the other portion is the cost because the Jamesville Gazette has a higher um amount of page subscriptions. Then the cost is a little bit higher, and these costs are actually um set by the Department of Administration since they are legal notices. So there's advantages, disadvantages um to, to both. Um, both are great options, but I wanted to make sure that we had all that information um to make that decision.
This is the time for questions and comments. And, and you can think about it, like I am not rushing you to deliberate over it.
That pricing, that's for a per issuance service every time you.
Uh, the amount that is included is for both together. So there is, it is what, twenty, twenty dollars, a little less than twenty dollars difference, and that's for, for both. That's the total publication for both. Um, and we'll save, I also did an ordinance one, um, and so that's a very, a smaller publication, smaller, it's, I think that was four lines. And so there was a five dollar difference for that one.
So is that per pub- each time you pay the fee or is it for an entire year?
That's each time, yeah, even each legal notice is separate. Yeah, each le- legal notice is separate, however, in the memo, the fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents includes a publication uh twice. So that's the total cost for those two publications.
That's per legal notice of sorts. How many legal notices do you do in a year roughly, you think?
Oh, I, it really depends on the, the biggest portion of this is going to depend on the request. So if, if someone requests a variance, um, a conditional use permit, that's going to increase because conditional uses are two, uh, bids. If we have, as some of our bids, um, we have to publish. So I mean, again, it can be anywhere from, I don't even know, I guess a hundred.
Yeah, that's what I would say. I would say probably, uh, there's, you know, with the Courier being a weekly paper, um, you know, there's probably three to five in every edition on average. You know, not every edition, but you know, every bid, every rezoning, every ordinance change, every conditional use permit, every variance, and I'm sure there's probably others that missing.
So roughly speaking, the cost impact of, you know, if we were to go from Courier to the Gazette, you say there's a hundred in a year of roughly fifteen hundred dollars. Did math right?
Possibly, yes.
Roughly, that's real rough, real rough guess.
Did you want to weigh in on the math?
It doesn't need to be precise, it just, you know, it's trying to get a, it's more than just a fifty dollar increase.
Less than that because not everything's a class two.
Right.
And conditional use per, uh, uses are longer publications compared to, um, let's say for a contract. Um, a contract notice, that's going to be a lot smaller.
Just wanted to quantify the yearly amount because that's what you end up budgeting for in the end.
I think i- in, in, in my opinion, again, this is purely a council decision, this is purely a policy decision. It comes down to um, for the additional cost, for the additional incremental cost that we, we have with the Gazette versus the, the Courier. Uh, we get uh an incre- we, we, it's a shorter turnaround time. So depending on how you want to look at that, it's to the advantage of the developer or the business owner or the contractor that we can do business faster. Um, the downside is, is that it is a little bit more expensive and there may be a perception in the community that we are um going with an outside newspaper, despite the fact that they're owned by the exact same company, so.
And I will share some information um that we share our election notices with other municipalities. Um, Town of Milton, Town of Johnstown, and Town of Harmony. Um, Town of Johnstown, I did let everyone know, or let those other communities know that we were pu- putting this in the memo for this evening. Um, Town of Johnstown actually reached out and they said that if we were to go with the Gazette, they would actually encourage it just because they feel that their re- their population, the readers, are more doing the Gazette to the Courier, but again, that's in their township. And they don't have, they don't have a preference otherwise.
You, you do have to make a decision in May.
I'm not sure what the wording of the uh motion is.
Uh, the motion would be to select whichever newspaper as the official city newspaper for two thousand twenty-two.
That's all it needs to be?
Yep.
Okay, I'll move that we select the Gazette as the official city newspaper for the coming year.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. There's not going to be a tie for me to break. Thank you, Larry. So any further questions or comments?
Have we ever thought that maybe we could, should put it in both papers? Just because of those people that you know are going to come back to us and say, uh, this is the Milton paper?
I believe we have to select an official city newspaper if we want to choo- if we were to choose to add an additional publication in another newspaper. We could, but we have to do an, an official one, correct?
Correct, yes.
Are you ready? Any more questions or comments? Do you want to do a roll call vote?
Is it helpful to have the amount paid to the Courier last year?
Sure.
So last year, we paid six thousand eight hundred. The amount of increase from the Courier to the Gazette is about one point two eight. So if we would have paid based on the rates, we would have paid the Gazette right around eight thousand seven hundred. So about a two thousand dollar increase for the year.
How much do we budget for? Sorry, make you dig that deep.
That is not part of the motion.
Yeah, I think the other piece of the equation too is if we find that uh the costs become untenable, which is highly unlikely. We could always review the uh, the cost that we charge for those types of actions that require a notification. Um, conditional use permits, variances, and rezonings are two hundred and fifty dollars apiece. So um, I don't see it, I don't foresee an issue in which this will cause any financial hardship or changes to the budgets or budget amendments.
I didn't think so either, just trying to find a difference.
The budget for two thousand twenty-two is four thousand dollars.
Well, then. Alright, um, is there, there's a motion and there is a second. All those in favor say aye? Is there anyone opposed? By a very slim margin, three to two. The Jamesville Gazette is our official paper. I am forwarding the questions to you guys. General items, does anybody have any general items? Committee reports, we've, we've had some committee meetings. Anybody want to report on any committee meetings?
I will give a, just a short report on the library board last night. We did have on our agenda as to whether or not people wanted to do in-person meetings or um the virtual meetings. And uh, the decision that we came up with and was we were going to stick with the hybrid, what we'd been doing. If people want to come in, that's okay, but it's also okay to stay on Zoom. And I just wanted to share that because that was one of my concerns with going, just going straight into in-person meetings where I, I wanted to know what our, all of our committees were thinking.
Anything else for anyone on committee meetings?
That would be Parks and Rec then, correct?
That would be you.
Been practicing all day, okay. So the uh Parks and Rec commission welcomed two new members, myself and Lucas Murphy. Ryan Peterson was elected as the chairperson. Um, for those that didn't know, the city received a grant from Alliance Energy's Community Tree Program. For five thousand dollars, which translates to twenty trees being planted in King Park and Crossridge Park. Uh, those trees will be planted in areas of parks where there are dead trees, invasive species, and other garbage and debris uh removed by Public Works uh staff this spring. The community is invited to assist with that planting, which will take place May seventh at King Park and May fourteenth at Crossridge Park. In addition, the uh Tales and Trails Dog Park cleanup has been scheduled for May ninth at five thirty. And as this, I need to mention that that doesn't include the actual dog poop because we were told that, that most of the people that use the park take cleanup well after their dogs. So there is other sorts of trash, and so I wanted to come be a part of it after I learned that it didn't include the dog par- uh, dog poop. And that uh, that's it, that's the highlight.
I just want to say congratulations. That was an excellent committee report, probably one of the better ones we've had from council members. I'm sorry, the rest of you, come on. Pretty good, pretty good. Oh, and, and the, the stage has been set, so you want to go, Teresa, and then Ryan will round up?
Oh.
No, he, you're going to go first.
Gathering Place, yes. Uh, this was supposed to be a four-year plan. We have now reduced it to a three-year plan. It will be done by uh October first, and uh, or those are the plans. And the first weekend in October, we will be having a community-wide celebration. It's also the thirtieth anniversary of the development of the Gathering Place. And so we will be honoring that as well as the new gathering green uh with a large celebration. We uh are also in, involved in extending the performances this summer. There, in the past, we've had three community music performances. This summer, we will be having six community performances. Uh, those are all listed on the website. I, I think they may be listed in a variety of areas. And so I encourage you to watch if the weather's great, get out there and go to a couple of them if you can. Um, there are, the, right now, the one area in process is to can finish, or finish the concession stand in the restrooms. But much of the rest of it is already completed, except, you know, bringing up the, the grass and some other areas that will finalize the, the appearance, appearance of the group area. So, doing a great job.
Another excellent report. I don't know, Ryan, can you keep up with these two?
I was tempted to do like, you know, one of those uh, like wrestler type, you know, announcer type things. But no, I'm just going to go ahead and say historic preservation meets tomorrow. We'll be discussing walking tours, historic preservation awards, oral history, interpretive signs, and some educational events. So feel free maybe to show up and listen to those topics, maybe chime in.
Is that by Zoom or in person?
In person, here. Sorry, there is a Zoom option. Uh, it is at five thirty, here.
Alright, excellent job.
I was just going to give a committee report about plan commission and then I'll kind of dovetail it into a staff report.
Okay, Al's elected to put himself first in the staff report.
Well, I'm going to go last in committee reports. You know, it's, it's called a snake. So, uh, at Plan Commission this, uh, earlier today, we approved the, or they, they forwarded a favorable recommendation, not only for the CSM that the council approved, but also for uh the Red Hawk Farms uh final plat. In addition to that, there was a site plan that was approved for the fifty thousand square foot expansion uh out in the industrial park. And that's when I'll segue into the staff report, to the fifty thousand square foot addition. And the CSM are, are reflections of continual development that are occurring in the city of Milton. If anybody's kind of driven out by Claussen Quality Chocolates, that is, uh, there's steel erected, there's walls up. It's starting to, you know, really become uh, you know, very visible out there. It still looks like a something small in the middle of this gigantic field, but it is moving along. They're planning on starting the rail in two weeks is their plan. Uh, so again, uh, just a ton of activity. And, you know, approved a residential subdivision tonight. It's uh, and, and we know that Claussen is very likely going to bring forth another site plan for another facility in the city of Milton very soon. We've had those conversations with them. It's, there's just a tremendous amount of activity and, you know, supply chains have been causing problems for the entire globe. But there's just so much going on and um, you know, I know like speed limit radar signs are good clickbait on Facebook, but the business of the city is to grow and we are doing that tremendously. And, you know, it just, that's the kind of stuff that we focus on. And um, you know, it's, it's really, it's great for the community, it's great for uh, you know, those businesses, it's bu- it's great for employment. And, you know, that's the job of the, of, of the city and that's what we are proud of and, and that's what we want to celebrate. Um, and not kind of get bogged down with Facebook nonsense. So that's my uh staff report and uh update at the same time.
Thank you very much. Alright, uh, Jenny, did you want to go next? Do you have anything? I mean, you talked a lot.
I don't have to talk too much more. Uh, it's just a couple of reminders about trainings. We still have the local government one-on-one trainings. Uh, May sixth is the first webinar, otherwise there's more throughout the year. So if you're interested, um, there is also an option to have it as a video to watch for future. So if that's something, if those dates don't work, just let me know, we can make it work. Um, other options, the zoning planning commission is um, that I sent out probably a couple of weeks ago. Um, those trainings are still available, so there's some coming up, and then we'll also have those available as recorded options too. And then next week, we have our board review on May eleventh at five P M.
Alright, thank you very much. Library?
Um, despite the weather on Sunday, we had a very successful food truck rally. Um, so thank you for everyone who came out to eat some food and support the library. I believe three trucks ran out of food, so it was quite successful. Um, our next one will be on Sunday, August twenty-eighth, so hopefully it's not like a hundred degrees that day. Um, registration is open for our Milton Mayhem Bike Scamper Hunt on June eighteenth. And our Library Lope Let's Dash for Books Fun Run on August thirteenth. The lope is the Tina Viserys Board's annual fundraiser, and this is the seventh year that we're running it, so that's very exciting. Artwork for the Harmony, from the Harmony students is on display throughout the library this month, and there'll be an open house at the end of the month. And then Marika, Jamie, and I will be attending the Wisconsin Association for Public Libraries Conference next week in Peewaqui. And Jamie and I will be presenting a session on all the fun, unique kits that we have available for checkout. That's what's going on. Well, yeah, um, I don't think I mentioned this yet. Next, sometime next couple of weeks, we are going to have an artist, Emily Ballsley from the Madison area. She is painting a mural in our stairwell that leads up to the children's area. So I asked her to incorporate Milton history, Milton College, um, gardening, like our story gardens, and agricultural um aspects into the, to the mural. She'll, she'll have it completed by, I believe, June tenth. So we're very excited to add some color into that gray stairwell.
Besides the numbers that I count going up.
And the numbers on the stairs, yep.
Don't take the numbers away.
And she's going to put some like hidden like Easter egg um parts in there too, so kids can find things, and probably my cat Charlie too.
Perfect. Okay, Kelsey?
I don't have any updates today.
Well, you did do a lot of math. I don't have any updates today. We did do a lot of math tonight, so. Mark?
The playground, uh, equipment at North Goodrich is all assembled, uh, with some of the finishing touches coming here. When the weather gets a little better, so they can spread the mulch and do that kind of work, but that should be opened up here within the next week or two. Um, a lot of the work that's been approved for purchase at the treatment plant has either been completed or scheduled. Parts are ordered, so there's quite a bit going on there with maintenance type items. Otherwise, um, just normal routine type work.
Gotcha. Inga, did you want to yell anything this way? Did I? Are you a staff member?
No, but I just would like to point out that on the front of this cover that we received tonight, we have our own special Inga.
Yes, yes.
Did you see this, Inga?
I did, and I looked mad at it.
Oh, I don't think.
Turn around the camera too. Whoever else is not. Looks good, Inga.
Al, you had one more?
Yeah, one, one more thing too, uh, uh, for those folks who, I, I know everybody kind of got an email about it and some folks attended. Last Thursday's presentation at the Edgerton, uh, Performing Arts Center in regards to the, uh, public listening session is available on YouTube. You can watch it right now. It's a little long, but it is completely packed with information, and it was an incredibly wonderful opportunity to share that information with all of the stakeholders involved. All ten municipalities were present, or at least had representatives present. Um, Ri- Chief Pickering did a great job of going through the, uh, seventy-plus page staff report. Anisa had outstanding opening comments. It was really, uh, a kind of historic monumental moment. Uh, I don't know that those ten municipalities have ever been in the same room at the same time, and, you know, we, we kind of joked about it, but said maybe we should do this again. It was a phenomenal opportunity to share that information, and it's just the start of the information kind of sharing opportunities that we're going to have as we move through this process. Uh, Edgerton Fire Protection District has not, you know, given the up or down on the, on the petition, uh, but, you know, we know that there's work underway and, and good things are happening and good things are coming. But if you haven't watched that video, um, it's, it, there's just so much information in it, and then to see kind of the support that was, uh, was given from those municipalities towards the end of it during the question and answer session, even though there was really only one question. Uh, I mean, Jeff Clentz, you know, spoke, uh, Brian Meyer spoke, Anisa spoke, uh, Randy Pickering spoke. When the question was asked, Brian Meyer and Jeff Clentz both answered it. It's just, this is really, uh, a combined effort. This isn't, you know, just one or, one or two municipalities or one or two people. This is, this is a countywide effort, and, uh, I think Randy had said the, the number, but, you know, it's something like forty percent of the county could potentially be covered under this fire protection district. That is huge and something, uh, that we're excited about, and, you know, we know that the work is not done and that there's going to be a lot of work even after, hopefully the petition is approved. Uh, but again, I encourage folks to, to watch that and, and, you know, really, just a great opportunity to kind of start sharing that story for folks who may not have been following along for the last two years. Uh, and I don't blame you if you haven't, uh, but, uh, it's just great, and I hope we can continue that type of, uh, really, really collegial dialogue, so.
It was pretty historic and it was fun to be a part of it. Inga, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I did want to have a staff report, I guess. So, um, during that meeting, I was, um, given the title of technology director, so I felt the need to talk about our technology quick, especially for people who are watching on YouTube. So just so we know, that camera is completely dead. It will not come back to life, I don't think. And this one's working, but I can't move it at all, so it's a very static image. The audio, um, just stopped working earlier today. So long story short, I'm going to be working with some people in town and just trying to figure out how to make this better for not just us, but also people watching on YouTube since we're streaming it. So wanted to put my technology director hat on and provide an update on that. Um, also, just if anyone's looking for volunteer opportunities, we have a lot of really great options coming up, as Erica talked about, the tree planting days, dog park cleanup, but then also with story gardens. Um, there's some gardening activities that we're looking at doing for, um, this upcoming year and construction projects and that kind of thing. So if anyone's looking for some type of a project, we're in communications with an Eagle Scout right now on doing some of the tiered garden bed work at the, at Story Gardens. So if you know of anyone looking for volunteer opportunities, let them know to contact, um, Ashley, me, whoever on staff, and we can help direct them to the right person. Also, we're just do- finishing up recruitments for an accounting intern at City Hall that would work June first through the end of the year, and then also for the seasonal, um, employees for the Public Works Department. So, uh, Thursday this week, we're going to start reviewing applications for the accounting intern and trying to set up interviews. We have, um, a few applications now, but still taking them in, want to make sure that we get the best candidate possible, and we're still hiring for at least one more position for the seasonals. So that's where we're at.
And we have a new employee.
Maggie, um, Kaseke, she is our newest employee. She is the project coordinator for, project coordinator of community substance use prevention, full title, but project coordinator suffices. Um, and that is through the Drug Free Communities Grant that we received and are working with the Milton Youth Coalition on.
So I anticipate that she'll, um, s- present at, uh, a council meeting in the future where you can all meet her, but really excited to have her on board. Yeah. Ashley?
I'll just say I'm very excited to have Maggie on board. She has experience doing, um, this similar work in the city of Beloit. So, for ten years, so she's jumping right in and tackling everything, so it's great.
Pretty fabulous, so. All right, anything else for general items? Our next meeting date is May seventeenth. You all know I will not be here. You will be in the hands of Larry, or if Larry's not here, somebody else, so, um, good luck. And someone will have to come up with team building. Um, and that's all I have. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Good job, you guys.
So I, I know the recording is, I just found out during this meeting, oh, you are? Well, anybody can share this. I just found out during this meeting that my wife just adopted a litter of kittens.
Yay! Yes, we can, yes, we.